Good evening and welcome, everyone. I'm calling the August 1st City Council Meeting to Order. As a reminder to those that are here and are watching, we continue to have a remote aspect to our meetings. Both staff and members of the public may be participating in tonight's meeting remotely via WebEx. This evening, Council President Walsh and Council Member Martz have excused absences. And the first item on the agenda this evening is the Pledge of Allegiance, so please join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. So we have a couple of fun things under special business today, and we'll start with ID 1226. This is the recognition of local student Maya Mendiola by the Sister Cities Young Artists and Authors Showcase, or YAAS. So I'd like to invite Stephanie Angula from the Sister Cities Commission, the Chair of the Sister Cities Commission, to the lectern to introduce this item. Welcome, Stephanie.
Thank you for being called. My name is Stephanie Angula.
Stephanie, I think your mic may not be on. If there's a button, goes right there you go.
Is that better?
That is better.
Okay. I'll start over. Thank you, Mayor Polly and City Council members. My name is Stephanie Angula, and it's been my pleasure serving the Sister Cities Commission for the past four years. As you may know, Issaquah has two sister cities, Sundal, Norway, and Chef Shaw in Morocco. As a commission, we work to grow and maintain a bond with these two sister cities while also supporting our own community in the spirit of global knowledge, goodwill, and understanding. In spring of this year, our commission learned about a national competition held annually for youth of Sister Cities International member cities called the Young Artist and Author Showcase. The commission decided to participate and was excited by the theme of 2022 Generation Rescue Sustainable Water for All, a relatable theme for Issaquah. With the competition and theme in mind, this past March, our commission held an open call for Issaquah youth ages 13 to 18 to submit original works in the categories of visual art, digital art, photography, written composition, poetry, and original music. The goal was twofold: to engage Issaquah's youth and celebrate talent at the local level, as well as promote the top qualifiers to the national competition. On that note, please allow me to introduce Maya Mendiola. Maya, can you come forward? Happy to be here. Maya is a student of Liberty High School. Upon hearing about the youth showcase from her teacher and allowing her mind to interpret the theme "Sustainable Water for All," Maya, a digital artist, got to work, creating this beautiful piece you see here on the screen. She has titled her work "Celestial Aquatic." Not only is this art stunning and impactful from this view, I hope you all are lucky enough to study it in a way that allows you to notice all the thoughtful details Maya included. Thanks to her interest in talent, Maya gave our commission an opportunity to review her art. And with the help of the Arts Commission, we easily determined it was not only our pleasure to recognize and celebrate her locally, but we were excited to promote Maya and "Celestial Aquatic" to the national competition. Okay, Maya. Please accept these flowers and congratulations. And Madam— Madam Mayor, if you could be so kind to present the certificate.
Sure. Maya, why don't you come over and join me? Thank you, Stephanie. That was lovely. So the city has prepared a certificate. Come right here so everybody can see. Awesome. Really to recognize this amazing achievement by one of our young scholars at Liberty High. Well done. So the certificate of achievement is hereby awarded to Maya Mendiola, local winner and nominee to the Sister Cities International 2022 Young Artists and Authors Showcase, YAAS. In recognition of your outstanding digital art, "Celestial Aquatic," dated this first day of August 2022, congratulations, and we wish you the best at the national level.
Thank you. Thank you so much. (applause) Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Maya. Another round of applause for Maya. Fantastic.[299.88][299.88](applause) Next, ID 1227, I would like to invite our—do a recognition of our Public Works Director, Bob York. Bob, do you want to come up and join me? You can use—say your comments up here. We can stand side by side. We like each other. Congratulations, Bob. So tonight, I hope you help me to wish Bob—congratulate Bob York on his retirement and wish him a great retirement. Public Works Director Bob York is retiring after 20 years of public service. His last day is September 1st. Bob served Issaquah as our Utilities Engineering Manager for four years, and in the last two years as our first-ever Public Works Director after merging operations and engineering departments. Prior to Issaquah, he was the Senior Engineer of the Port of Seattle responsible for over $1 billion of utility assets. He also worked for CH2M Hill for 24 years, designing and advising on over 150 projects for his clients. Bob is an excellent engineer with a reputation for thriftiness, a sly wit, and is someone who truly cares about his team. Among his many contributions in Issaquah, most notable are his accomplishments in PFAS, making Issaquah the leader in the state in testing, monitoring, and filtration of PFAS to ensure our water supply is better than the state and federal standards. Bob also negotiated a deal with Cascade Water, which allows our city to keep water in abundant supply and keep rates low for years to come. Bob is a highly trusted expert in his field and has helped Issaquah build great relationships with state and local partners. Thank you, Bob, for all you have done for the city, and best wishes in your retirement. And it looks like you might have a few words to share.
If you insist.
I insist.
Thank you, Mayor Polly and council members. It's been a real honor to serve the city for six-plus years. I had a comfortable job at the Port of Seattle heading toward retirement, and then one evening I almost randomly applied to the city of Issaquah to see if I could write another different chapter in my diverse career. Well, within a day or two, Sheldon called. Sheldon Lynn, the previous Public Works Engineering Director, and despite initial hesitation, like, what am I doing? I work at an airport. What's an airport and a city have in common? Is this a step too far? But partly because I live in the greater Issaquah area and have an affinity—I've always held an affinity to the city—I decided to write that new chapter and accept that offer. Then the opportunity for the Public Works Director arose, and initially I was hesitant, only casually interested, but there was a grassroots effort on behalf of all my teammates, both in PWO and PWE. They gave me the encouragement to submit my application to offer the city an internal candidate at the last minute. So my great teammates kept on encouraging me throughout that process, and lo and behold, here I stand today. So another chapter was written. Now almost two—two years has passed, and I want to give all the credit to that incredible And also all the many other city employees, as well as our elected officials, teammates from other cities and agencies, and many from the general public. Those names are too numerous to recite, but you all know who you are. So thanks. I'm so blessed to still be in good health and enjoy what's next. I plan on staying in touch with my great team and many of you. I will never forget this chapter in my life. Thank you.
That was beautiful. Next on our agenda this evening, I would like to ask interim Chief of Police—interim, whoopsie, old script. Congratulations. She is actually the chief. I would like to ask Chief Shuan to come up and bring our new officers, and I believe we have a promotion as well this evening. Do you want to come on up and introduce them? Thanks. I think it would be nice to introduce them facing the council, and then when we do the ceremony, I'll bring each one up individually here.
Sure. You bet. Thank you very much, Madam Mayor, council. We have—first, we're going to start with our two newer officers. They're both laterals. We have Ryan DeVille, came to us from Kansas City. Okay, we have Zaquan Hogan, who goes by Hogan, and they're both new to us. DeVille, actually, today, he's off FTO, so we welcome him and we congratulate him as well. And we're excited to have them as an addition for all their knowledge and experience that they're going to bring to our city. New to Washington, but yet having a blended experience to bring to our community through their years of experience elsewhere. So that's what we're first going to be doing. And then we have our officer, William Sorenson, who some of you may know as Bill, and he's been with our department for many years, and he's going to be, as recently promoted, to sergeant. So we congratulate him tonight as well.
Thank you, Chief. Can I get Ryan to come up first? Come and join me here, and as I administer the oath, if you can raise your hand and repeat after me. I, Ryan DeVille—
Aye, Ryan DeVille.
—having been duly appointed—
Having been duly appointed—
—to the Office of Police Officer—
To the Office of Police Officer.
—of the City of Issaquah, Washington—
Of the City of Issaquah, Washington.
—do solemnly swear—
Do solemnly swear.
—that I will faithfully and impartially—
That I will faithfully and impartially—
—perform the duties—
Perform the duties—
—of my office—
Of my office—
—as prescribed by law—
As prescribed by law—
—and to the best of my ability—
And to the best of my ability—
—and that I will support and maintain—
That I will support and maintain—
—the ordinances of the City of Issaquah—
Support and maintain the—
—ordinances of the City of Issaquah—
Ordinances of the City of Issaquah—
—and the laws and constitution—
And the laws and constitution—
—of the State of Washington—
And the State of Washington—
—and of the United States of America—
And the United States of America—
So help me God—
So help me God—
Congratulations and welcome.
Thank you.
You want to come on up and pin the badge? Do you want to take your picture? That was awesome. Congratulations, Ryan. Thank you.
You can get pictures. Come on, come on, take your pictures.
One more time.
Want to go get in the picture and I'll take it? Do you want to go get in the picture?
Oh, sure. You're gonna need to take your—
You should be able to.
Oh, no. Okay.
Hogan, you're up.
Counsel, can I just say I failed to mention that Zaquan Hogan comes to us from Mobile, Alabama.
Welcome. Can you raise your right hand and repeat after me? I—I'm going to say it wrong.
That's okay.
Zaquan—
Yes, Zaquan Hogan.
Zaquan Hogan. Having been duly appointed—
Have been duly appointed—
—to the Office of Police Officer—
To the Office of Police Officer—
—of the City of Issaquah—
Of the City of Issaquah—
—Washington—
Washington—
—do solemnly swear—
Do solemnly swear—
—that I will faithfully and impartially—
That I will faithfully and impartially—
—perform the duties of my office—
Perform the duties of my office—
—as prescribed by law—
As prescribed by law—
—and to the best of my ability—
And to the best of my ability—
—and that I will support and maintain—
And that I will support and maintain—
—the ordinances of the City of Issaquah—
The ordinances of the City of Issaquah—
—and the laws and constitution—
And the laws and constitution—
—of the State of Washington—
And the State of Washington—
—and of the United States of America—
And of the United States of America—
So help me God—
So help me God—
Congratulations and welcome. Chief, can you come up and help us out? Let's get Bill up here. This is fun. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Can you raise your right hand? I, Bill Sorenson—
I, Bill Sorenson—
—having been duly appointed—
Having been duly appointed—
—to the Office of Sergeant—
To the Office of Sergeant—
—of the City of Issaquah, Washington—
Of the City of Issaquah, Washington—
—do solemnly swear—
Do solemnly swear—
—that I will faithfully—
That I will faithfully—
—and impartially—
And impartially—
—perform the duties of my office—
Perform the duties of my office—
—as prescribed by law—
As prescribed by law—
—and to the best of my ability—
And to the best of my ability—
—and that I will support and maintain—
And that I will support and maintain—
—the ordinances of the City of Issaquah—
The ordinances of the City of Issaquah—
—and the laws and constitution—
And the laws and constitution—
—of the State of Washington—
Of the State of Washington—
—and the United States of America—
And the United States of America—
So help me God—
So help me God—
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Who would like to come up and— And Danielle is coming up to do the pinning. So much fun.[1005.23][1005.23](applause) And now I'm going to call Chief Shuan to come up as well. While they're taking pictures, I'm going to grab a proclamation. Welcome, Chief. So the next item we have on our agenda this evening is ID 1173, which is the National Night Out proclamation, and I'm going to present this to Chief Shuan. Whereas National Night Out is a community-building campaign that promotes police-community partnerships annually on the first Tuesday of August, and whereas the 38th Annual National Night Out provides a unique opportunity for the City of Issaquah to join forces with thousands of other communities across the country in promoting cooperative police-community drug and crime prevention efforts. And whereas the City of Issaquah and the Issaquah Police Department play a vital role in crime, drug, and violence prevention efforts in Issaquah and are supporting National Night Out 2022 locally, and whereas it is essential that all residents of the City of Issaquah be aware of the importance of crime-prevention programs and the impact that their participation can have on reducing crime, drugs, and violence in Issaquah. And whereas police-community partnerships, neighborhood safety, awareness, and cooperation are important themes of the National Night Out program, now therefore I, Mary Lou Polly, Mayor of the City of Issaquah, do hereby proclaim August 2nd, 2022, to be National Night Out in the City of Issaquah and urge all citizens to join in the community festivities, raising awareness for this important cause. Thank you, Chief. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and council. This proclamation is huge, and we appreciate it greatly. And the collaboration between our police department and the community is major and the main—the main reason we're here. And so these efforts are greatly appreciated by all the communities that participate, and we have several this year coming back after two years of COVID and that being on hold. So we are excited to be able to bring that back. We are also hosting it at the City Hall on the backside, and we welcome all the communities who come join us as well. We have several people that'll be joining, other agencies that are collaborating that we partner with, to include King County for air support, marine support, the Bomb Disposal Unit, all of those as well. So it's a big collaboration, not just for the community, but for other agencies. And as you mentioned, we share that with all the different communities across the nation. And so this is the night that we try and come together, and we have other vendors as well that really focus on the safety and opportunities between the police department and our community. So thank you again for this proclamation. Appreciate it.
Thank you. We have a lot of guests with us tonight, so we're going to take a five-minute recess in case anybody would like to take some more pictures or exit and not stay for the rest of our fun, fun meeting tonight. So we are in recess for five minutes.
We are back from our short recess and we are moving on to audience comments. Members of the public may address council at this time, in person or virtually. Those who signed up in advance to make comments will be called on first. And if you're joining us virtually and would like to make comments, please raise your virtual hand. If you're on the phone, press star three. If you have joined by computer or smartphone, look for a hand icon. This can vary by device, but one option may be to go to the participant panel and choose the raise hand icon in the lower right-hand corner. If you're in the room and did not sign up, I will ask for other speakers before closing this portion of the meeting. City Clerk, has anyone signed up this evening to speak for general audience comments?
Mayor, no one has signed up in advance to speak and we do not have any virtual members of the public tonight.
Would anyone else like to provide some comments this evening? Thank you for coming. So as a reminder, written comments can be submitted at any time to the city council at citycouncil@isiquawawa.gov. Deputy Council President Hall, do you have any email comments to summarize on tonight's agenda topics?
There are no emails to summarize based on tonight's agenda topics. Thank you.
Thank you. So the next item of business for us this evening is committee and regional reports, and we will start with Councilmember Joe.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. On July 19th, City Administrator Bakowitz and I met with the chamber board as my role as chamber liaison to let them know what was going on with the city. I conveyed to them the new legislation that was, that we put in place to retain the clean building standard action to get those buildings up to code. On the 29th, we had our LTAC meeting, Lodging Tax Advisory Committee meeting. We did some budget discussion at that time so we could prepare for the September discussions that will be coming up. And we received a report from Visit Isiqua and their quarterly report was given to us. That concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Joe. Councilmember DeMichele?
Thank you, Mayor Paulie. On behalf of Councilmember Martz, who is absent tonight, I'm reporting on the Safety, Security and Parks Committee meeting that was held on July the 19th. Am I being heard all right? Okay.
It sounds like it.
Okay, thanks. So Chair Martz, Councilmember Ray and myself discussed three different items. The first one was ID 0724, Facilities Assessment and Surplus Property Policy. The committee favors the administration's suggested approach and would like to see it move forward. We recommended that the measure be placed on the consent agenda for approval by the full council. The second item was ID 1126, Cultural Calendar, introduced by Equity Board members Kelly Munn and Megan Reickley. It was wonderful to see them there. The Safety Services and Parks Committee is supportive of the calendar that was presented. We acknowledge that the calendar will evolve and change over time. Committee thanked the Equity Board and staff for their time and effort on the calendar and recommended moving it to the full council on the consent agenda. And then the last item, which was the major discussion, was ID 1162, Landlord and Tenant Protections. Of the three recommendations offered by ARCH, a regional coalition for housing, the committee favored adoption of the first recommendation, a 120-day notification requirement for rent increases above 3%. On the other two recommendations offered by ARCH, the committee felt that caps on late fees and moving costs don't have an impact on increasing rental rates and might even trigger additional rent increases by landlords. The committee recommended preparing an ordinance for consideration by full council, requiring landlords to give 120 days' notice for rent increases above 3% and that the ordinance be placed on a regular agenda for deliberation by the full council. Committee also directed staff to continue to monitor regional and state, I have a different word here, I'm sorry, to monitor regional and state actions with regard to the ARCH suggestions. And then finally, all of my regional committee meetings where I serve have been canceled, so I have nothing else to report. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember DeMichele. Councilmember Hunt?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have two reports this evening. They both have to do with salmon recovery, and then I have one upcoming meeting. The Kokoni ILA, which stands for Interlocal Agreement Management Committee, met on July 20th, and at this meeting, we approved the 2023 Kokoni ILA Work Plan, the budget and the cost share. And basically, this will allow us to continue the good work of this group. They provide very important services for conservation of kokoni, which is a very endangered kind of salmon that live in Lake Sumamish. One other update regarding kokoni is that shortly after the meeting, we heard that Perry Falcone will be taking a new position as King County's Water and Land Resources Division as manager of the Watershed and Ecosystem Assessment Team, so this is very exciting. And it will mean that over the next couple of months, we will have, there will be work on a transition plan, and they will begin the process to hire a new kokoni recovery manager. So very excited for Perry for that new opportunity. And that concludes that report. The Wyra 8 Salmon Recovery Meeting occurred on July 21st. Wyra 8 is the technical name for our watershed here. And at this meeting, we approved the project subcommittee's recommendation for allocation of additional funding for salmon recovery projects throughout the watershed. This was about $512,000 worth of state grants that were additionally allocated to go towards salmon recovery. So that was excellent. Continues the excellent work of that group. The next meeting of the Wyra 8 Salmon Recovery Meeting will be September 15th at 2:00 to 4:15 p.m. And then I have one upcoming meeting. We will have a meeting of the Planning, Development and Environment Committee on August 4th. This is one of the subcommittees of this council that works on planning, development and environment issues. And August 4th is a Thursday, which is not the usual day for this meeting, but that will be this coming Thursday. We have the two items. One is ID 1156, Title 18 Zoning and Development Standards. Title 18 is our land use code. And there are several items within this: affordable housing, transfer of development rights, or TDRs, landmarks and archaeological resources, and parking. And then the second item will be Title 18 Land Use Code Future Updates List. This is a list of items that council has determined will be addressed following our code update. And in this discussion, we have a couple items that are proposed by the administration for us to consider as a committee. And these include, are there any items that council, that the committee would like to add to that list? And does the list contain all the information for the council to sort the list for the purposes of determining which items to fund in the 2023-2024 budget? And I did want to raise this for council's consideration, if there are thoughts on that, because this item will be coming back to the full council shortly, and because it has to do with this whiteboard, which was identified as one of the priorities at our last retreat. I wanted to give council members an opportunity. If you have questions that our committee should consider, I'll raise this again at good of the order, and then we will take that input into our meeting for this Thursday. So with that, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Councilmember Hunt. Councilmember Ray?
Thank you, Mayor Paulie. The King County Growth Management Planning Council met on July 27th. There were three items on the agenda. One was a presentation on the updated City of Sumamish Housing Unit and Employment 2019-2044 Growth Targets. There was also a briefing on the Affordable Housing Committee's affordability framework, accountability framework, and the allocation of county-wide affordable housing needs. And finally, there was an updated schedule for the Urban Growth Area Expansion Policy, the four-to-one program review. And that concludes my report this evening.
Thank you, Councilmember Ray. Deputy Council President Hall?
Thank you. No report this evening.
Sounds fast. Okay, the next item is the mayor's report. There will be an executive session this evening to discuss pending and potential litigation per RCW 42.30.110-N1-NI. This item is expected to take a total of 30 minutes, and no action is anticipated in open session. Due to the state of inflation and supply chain, the actual costs of projects for parks and public works are costing significantly more than the estimates from one year ago. Historically, city staff has successfully secured quotes that are accurate or conservative in their estimates. However, due to the massive fluctuations in the economy, projects that were bid a year ago are costing much more than anticipated, and in some cases, over 50% as labor remains in high demand. Still, the administration projects that the city has sufficient reserves to cover these significant costs. Board and Commission Member Meeting Participation. The city has begun transitioning the city's advisory boards to in-person meetings in July, with a second phase in September. As part of this transition, I asked the board commission members to attend meetings in person. The public and staff were given the option to attend in person or virtually. Based on feedback from the volunteer board members, I'm asking staff to draft a policy giving the boards and commissions the option to allow limited virtual attendance of board members. The emphasis will remain on attending meetings in person, and a quorum of the boards will be required to be in person. However, the option to attend virtually will be available for certain situations. The city will continue monitoring COVID-19 public health protocols and may make further adjustments to meeting attendance requirements. And there is an ongoing recruitment right now for the Planning Policy Commission. The city is currently accepting applications for volunteer positions on the Planning Policy Commission. The commission serves as a policy advisory body and provides guidance and direction for Isqua's future growth through continued review and improvement to the city's comprehensive plan, the citywide land use policies, and related planning documents. We are looking to fill several vacant unexpired terms. Interested individuals should have an interest in environmental affairs, planning, land use, residential or commercial development, as evidenced by training, experience, or actions. City residency is required or ownership of a business located within city limits. Please help us spread the word about this recruitment. The application deadline is 5:00 p.m. on August 8, 2022. So to learn more and how to apply, go to isiquawawa.gov/apply. On July 26th, I want to thank everyone who participated in the various community events on the 26th of July, which included the Chalk Art, I still struggle with that one, Chalk Art Festival, the Resource Fair, the display of our time capsule, board and commission member appreciation, and concerts on the green. Thank you all for coming. It was a really fun day. Severe Heat Defense. As our region experiences higher-than-normal temperatures, a reminder to keep yourself and others safe and cool. Stay out of the sun and in air-conditioned spaces when possible. Stay hydrated and don't wait until you are thirsty to drink water. Never leave children or pets in parked car, even if the windows are cracked. Watch for signs of heat stroke, which includes heavy sweating, weakness, vomiting, clammy skin, or weak pulse. During heat waves, cooling centers are available in town. The Isiqua Little League Major's All-Star Softball Team is headed to the Little League Softball World Series. Please join me in congratulating the team for their success thus far. We wish the team luck as they head to the international competition in North Carolina next week. We are deeply saddened to learn of the recent passing of a longtime Public Works Operations employee, Eric Burnett. Eric served the city for over 36 years and embodied the city's values in work ethic, attitude, loyalty, and inspiration. Our thoughts are with Eric's family and the entire Public Works team as they mourn the loss of their beloved friend and colleague. And a few upcoming events. Splash Day. Beat the Heat at the Isiqua Community Center Lawn is back on August 3rd from 1:00 to 2:30 p.m. Stay cool through water games, activities, and more. The fire truck arrives at 2:00 p.m. to cool everyone down, so prepare to get wet. The August Eco Market. You can shop from a variety of small eco-friendly vendors, farmers, and artisans while learning about sustainable living at the Eco Market on August 11th. The market will be held outdoors at Village Green Park from 4:00 to 7:00 p.m. And the last upcoming community event is Global Grub and Groove. Join friends and neighbors at Village Green for fun food and free entertainment on August 12th from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. The event is free to attend, and the food is available for purchase. This month's event will celebrate Mexican culture, and just so everybody knows, Village Green Park is up in the Highlands. And that concludes the mayor's report for this evening. The next item of business is the Consent Calendar, and it was distributed to council in advance, so if authorized, the items on the consent calendar will be considered together and approved by one motion. Have the payables and payroll been reviewed?
They have.
They have.
Thank you. Does any council member desire to remove any item from the consent calendar and consider it under regular business? Is there a motion? Deputy Council President?
Thank you. I move to approve the consent calendar as presented in tonight's agenda packet.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any council discussion? Hearing none. The motion before council is to approve the consent calendar as presented. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That passes unanimously. And the next item is regular business. So thank you for being patient with us to get to our regular business, Isabel. AB 8430, the Newport Way Raised Intersection and Pedestrian Bridge Project. The request before council this evening is to award the bid and authorize the funding. And I'd like to invite Traffic Signal Operations Engineer Isabel Diaz to make a presentation. Welcome, Isabel. You may have to adjust that mic a little. Paulie, can you push, turn it on? Thanks.
Thank you.
This is your first council meeting, isn't it, Isabel?
Yes, this is my first in-person council meeting. Thank you, Madam Mayor, and good evening, members of the council. I will start sharing. My presentation. Okay. Well, good evening. My name is Isabel Diaz, Traffic Signal Operations Engineer, and I am here to present about the agenda bill that was included in the packet for Newport Way Pedestrian Bridge and Race Intersection Project. So to give a little brief overview of this project before presenting the improvements that will be done with the project, King County is constructing a new parking lot and amenities at Cougar Mountain Trailhead, located approximately here. And but pedestrian access across Anti-Aircraft Creek is currently limited to the northwest of the trailhead. So intersection improvements will be necessary to complete pedestrian connections to the trailhead. The picture showing in the right top shows how there is no safe way to walk past the Anti-Aircraft Creek from the existing gravel path. So pedestrians have been seen stepping up outside of the gravel path into the bike lane to navigate their way to the trailhead. And also, they have been seen crossing at multiple locations from the other side of Newport Way. In summary, the project will be constructing improvements for pedestrian to construct a pedestrian bridge over Anti-Aircraft Creek, approximately here, and also to rebuild the pedestrian, the gravel pedestrian path that exists from the creek to the trailhead. Additionally, Race Intersection will be constructed for, to, right in front of the trailhead driveway that is proposed from King County. And pedestrian crossing will be constructed to the northwest part of the intersection with rectangular rapid flashing beacons. The city had allocated $500,000 for this project in the 2020 adopted budget, based on estimates that were done in previous year. The design services and construction costs that were included in that 2020 budget were underestimated. Design contract came at $178,951. And the construction estimate, well, when we completed the design, was estimated in In addition to this increase in the design and the construction costs, no funds were allocated for construction management. Construction management and contingency, both are amounts that are estimated based on a percentage of the construction costs. So in total, the estimated project cost would really be around $1.3 million instead of the $500,000 that were budgeted for back in 2020. We opened four bids for the construction of the project last week, and the lowest bid was from Active Construction Inc. for $995,995. This would result in a new project cost, total project cost for one point, around $1.44 million. And this, I know this seems like a huge difference in project cost. Part of it is caused due to inflation, but we also recognize that when we budgeted for this project in 2022, sorry, I keep coming back and forth, we underestimated the project costs. For, sorry, is there a question?
No, I think you're fine to go. Thanks.
Okay. This table shows how we are proposing to fund this project. Now, knowing that the project cost is about $1.4 million, how we are proposing to fund this project using the already allocated budget of $492,000. And I would like to clarify that this number is slightly smaller than the $500,000 included in the adopted 2020 budget, after learning that the agreed contribution from King County was $92,000 instead of the $100,000 that were budgeted for. In addition to that, we are proposing to amend the 2022 budget to include $91,460 of under spend funds from strategic small capital projects, and additional $300,000 from the school safety fund, and $343,481 from the general fund. This would add up to a total of $734,941 from the budget amendment for 2022. And in addition, for the few, for next year, for 2023, include some general fund for $230,000. And in addition, for the few, for next year, for 2023, include some general fund for $213,943 for, to, just for the remaining work of the project that may extend into 2023. The two options that we are presenting to City Council tonight are to approve or delay the project. Approving the project now with a proposed budget will basically be our ticket to provide that safe pedestrian access prior to completion of King County Trailhead Project, which is currently scheduled to start construction in spring next year. With delaying the project, we don't know exactly what could happen with the project costs. Market is unpredictable, costs may increase or decrease. However, the trend that we have seen is increasing the costs. Also, if we delay the project, we need to consider the agreement with King County for the right-of-way, which stands what, that need for pedestrian connection before the King County Trailhead Project is completed. So our recommendation would be to approve the proposed motion of awarding a construction contract for the Newport Way Pedestrian Bridge Raised Intersection Project in the amount of $995,995, including sales tax to Active Construction, Inc., and direct the Chief Financial Officer to allocate an additional $948,884 for this project as follows. $734,941 in a subsequent 2022 budget amendment, including $91,460 from the Strategic Capital Projects Fund underspent, $300,000 from the school safety fund, and $343,488 from the general fund. And for $213,943 in the proposed 2023 budget from the general fund. That would conclude my presentation and I will stop in case the City Council has any questions.
Thanks Isabel, we do. Deputy Council President Hall.
Thank you very much for all your work into this. I have three quick questions. So, not that it is in any way a major factor as to why the price has jumped up very much, but construction management, since we didn't budget for that in 2020, is that common to not budget for construction management early on and then to kind of get a better sense of what that's going to cost later on? Do we just forget?
We typically do budget for construction management, especially if the project is considerable amount, size of the project, for smaller projects, and that could be the reason why, for the difference in project costs. For smaller projects, we don't generally do that because it is assumed that we could do the construction management in-house.
Ourselves, okay. That makes sense. And then when we're talking about some of the budget coming from school zone, safety fund and general fund, are we talking about fund balance from those funds or is this underspend in certain areas? I'm seeing the city administrator nodding his head for fund balance.
Yes, Deputy Council President, members of the council, good evening. Yes, we're looking at fund balance for both school safety fund and the general fund and what the motion would be allocating from '22 and then asking the administration to include it in next year's budget for the balance.
Thank you. And then finally, if I could just, can we pull up the slide again and go back to the map? I just kind of want to get a better sense of where this raised crosswalk is. So, there, you said there's also going to be, yeah, the flashing beacons. So there's already one of those right at the Northwest Oak Crest Drive at that intersection. So then there'll be another one up, a little farther up where the trailhead is. And I thought, right at the trailhead, there was kind of a median, kind of a large median. So is that going to go through the median or is it just kind of north or south of it?
No. When the intersection, the raised intersection is built, the median would not be right at the very middle of the intersection. There would be portions of the median still, but it would be open. The crossing would occur right at the intersection at the point where it's already raised.
Isabel, can you address whether or not there will be two rapid flashing, a crosswalk and a rapid flashing beacon, or just the rapid flashing beacon at the proposed location?
We will keep the, the rap, the existing crosswalks and the new crossing that will be placed for the raised intersection, that would be for direct access to the trailhead.
Councilmember De Michele.
Thank you so much and thanks for the really thorough presentation. I'm sorry that I actually didn't send this question in earlier because it pertains to this little $2,000 that goes into the arts fund. I had thought that art fund contributions were based on a percentage of the cost of the project, and so I'm wondering why that contribution remains the same even though the cost of the project has more than, let's see, more than doubled, yeah. So, and just generally, do we have a policy about our contributions to the art fund from our, from our construction projects?
Thank you, Councilmember De Michele, and I see that Deputy City Administrator Andrea Schneider is also on, so I will give her fair warning to turn her camera on and her microphone on. My sense is we'll need to go back and review that dollar amount adjustment. I think we've made the adjustments based on the increase in budget, but likely would need to make an adjustment for the percentage of arts. Ms. Schneider, does that sound about right to you or do you have additional information? And you're on mute.
I know that many cities have percent for the arts program. It was my understanding that Isaguas has an admissions tax that stands our arts program. So, I was trying to research that really quickly to confirm that, but certainly we can come back if that changes.
And I think rather than speculate any further, Councilmember De Michele, let's just take that question and we'll let the council know.
Yeah, I appreciate that. And again, my apologies for not actually sending that in earlier. It's just kind of a basic question. Being on the Arts Commission earlier, I thought, or I have a memory that there were contributions to the art fund from construction projects, but that was a long time ago and policy could have changed between my time on the Arts Commission and now. So, it would be great if I could get more information, that would be really nice to have. Thank you very much.
Any additional, any additional questions? And if not, would someone care to make a motion? Do you have it?
Yes. I have it. Thank you. I will read the long motion. I move to award the construction contract for the Newport Way Pedestrian Bridge and Raised Intersection Project, TR 055, in the amount of $995,995, including sales tax to Active Construction, Inc., and direct the Chief Financial Officer to allocate an additional $948,884 for this project as follows. $734,941 in a subsequent 2022 budget amendment, including $91,460 from the Strategic Small Capital Projects Fund, underspent, $300,000 from the school zone safety fund, and $343,481 from the general fund, and $213,943 in the proposed 2023 budget from the general fund.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Council discussion. Councilmember Hunt, then Deputy Council President Hall. Okay. Reverse the order.
Thank you. I'm, I, first and foremost, I want to thank the administration for putting this on regular business as opposed to the consent since the cost has jumped so much. I appreciate the explanation too, that, you know, inflationary factors have contributed dramatically to some of the costs that we see in our construction projects. And I think that the rationale for why it's gone up has been thoroughly explained, so I appreciate that. I think we have some items that we still need a little bit more information on, so whether the arts fund contribution needs to be altered. Since this is coming from general fund, fund balance, I think it would be good also to get a better sense of what this means if we're taking this from fund balance, how much is left in fund balances as we head into budget development. It's good to have that metric. I don't necessarily need to have it tonight though, but if we could have that sooner rather than later, that would be good. Although actually, I think we are getting an updated forecast on those kinds of things next week, so.
Yes, Deputy Council President, it's on your Committee of the Whole Agenda next Monday.
Perfect. Thank you for that clarification. And for those reasons, I'll be voting in favor of the project tonight. Thank you very much for all your work on it.
Councilmember Hunt.
Thank you. I also will be supporting this and at the risk of stating the obvious, while we do usually have, or often have, awarding contracts on consent, this, this one has had a substantial increase. And so I think, for me, this is, is just a, a, something that we should take into consideration going forward, that this may continue to happen because, as was mentioned also in the mayor's report earlier, there have been these increases due to inflation and the cost of construction. So we're sort of seeing that for the first time in a big way with this project and should be mindful, I think, of this going forward for other projects. I also think it's important not to delay for that reason and because this is a pedestrian safety project and is, has been in the works and is expected by the community and is a commitment to the community. So I will be supporting it, but I think the headline for me here is that we should be mindful that this will likely, or could possibly happen for other projects as well with these substantial increases against what was previously budgeted. Thank you.
Thank you. Any additional comments? Okay. It was moved and seconded to award the, was that too fast? Oh, you're laughing at the length of it. Yeah, thanks, thank you. Thank you Isabel. It's a little long. Award the construction contract for the Newport Way Pedestrian Bridge and Raised Intersection Project, TR 055, in the amount of $995,995, including sales tax to Active Construction, Inc., and direct the Chief Financial Officer to allocate an additional $948,884 for this project as follows. $734,941 in a subsequent 2022 budget amendment, including $91,460 from the Strategic Small Capital Projects Fund underspent, $300,000 from the school zone safety fund, and $343,481 from the general fund, and $213,943 in the proposed 2023 budget from the general fund. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That carries unanimously. The next item of business, thank you Isabel, the next item of business is AB 8435, amending Chapter 9.30 of the Isaguas Municipal Code with respect to protection order violations. And the request before council this evening is to adopt the ordinance, and I'd like to invite City Attorney Rachel Bender-Turpin to make a presentation. Hi Rachel.
Hi, thank you. Good evening, council mayor, staff. Tisha, are you able to share it for me? That would be great. Thank you. This ordinance is going to be pretty straightforward. It simply enacts legislation that was actually passed by the state in 2021, but it didn't become effective until July 1st of this year regarding protection order violations, the criminalization of protection order violations. It seeks to amend Chapter 9.30 of the Isaguas Municipal Code, which is where the city has previously included the criminal, the city's adoption of state laws that criminalize violation of protection orders of various types. Next slide, please. So, a little bit about protection orders. State law authorizes courts to enter protection orders to restrain individuals from engaging in all sorts of different types of harmful behavior. There are anti-harassment orders, there are domestic violence protection orders, there are sexual assault protection orders, vulnerable adult abuse protection orders, there's protection orders that restrain people from many, many different types of harassing or threatening dangerous whatever conduct. Next. These statutes, or these orders can grant a very broad variety of relief. It can range from no hostile contact with someone to you not, you're not able to come within 500 feet of their school, daycare, work, house, et cetera. Judges enter them after, after hearings, listening to the evidence on, on why the order is being sought. There's, they're actually civil orders, they're sought. These are not the orders that are issued by our judge in criminal court. Those often defendants in criminal court will also be ordered to stay away from people or to not engage in certain behaviors as conditions of their release or as conditions of their sentence. These are different. These are civil orders that people can petition the courts for and that are granted by the civil superior courts. However, violation of such orders then can result in criminal law, criminal proceedings against a person, mostly in the form of gross misdemeanors. There are a few exceptions. For instance, if you, if you assault someone in the process of committing a protection or domestic violence protection order violation, then that would be a felony. Or if you've had multiple convictions, two or more convictions for DV protection order, that would be a felony. But for the most part, they're gross misdemeanors, which means that, that courts of limited jurisdiction have jurisdiction over them, Isaguas Municipal Court being one. However, now you can go to the next slide. Because they are state statutes, they have to be adopted by reference in the Isaguas Municipal Code. Previous to this bill that was enacted in 2021, they were scattered throughout the RCW. So the domestic violence ones were in the domestic violence statutes and then the extreme risk protection order, which is a temporary order that protects people from, that, that will allow the, the courts to order that someone's firearms be removed for a temporary period if they've been demonstrated that they're a risk of harm to themselves or others. Those were in the firearm statutes and the harassment ones were in the, they were in the criminal code. So they were just kind of all throughout different areas. This bill essentially did a lot of things. It also changed the jurisdiction for a few of these, but the thing that's relevant to us is that it recodified them all in a single chapter of the RCW, which is actually handy because now I think people will, some, many cities had not, inadvertently not adopted all of these, and I think it's because they didn't know they existed. So now they are all part of one chapter. It's easier for the courts to administer that way. It's easier for everyone to see what the rules are and everything's just in one place. However, you can go to the next slide. That means that all of our references in the Isaguas Municipal Code are now outdated. We did have some language in the code that I think protects us that says that we adopted at least the domestic violence protection order law with, and a subsequent amendments there too. However, it's only a matter of time before that gets challenged by someone who has been charged with that. So it really would be better to clean it up and have it match what state law currently has these statutes codified as, with a little bit better language. Making those adoptions, that's a revised version of the ordinance that you would have seen mailed out by Clerk Geiser this evening, or this afternoon. That will hopefully prevent this from becoming an issue in the future by adopting any types of recodifications to these statutes in the future. Why is this an emergency? Well, there really is demonstrated evidence, there have been studies that show that protection orders, while they, they aren't a physical barrier, people can, can violate them clearly. But they, they actually do, have been shown to reduce harm and to reduce violence. And they really are only meaningful if they're enforced. And they really are only meaningful if they're enforced. So it's important that people know that they will be arrested and prosecuted if they violate these, otherwise you don't really have much of an incentive to do so. And because of that, I think just the nature of these, I wouldn't normally bring, I wouldn't normally bring many criminal law ordinances to the council as an emergency, because I do think, you know, that's something that you can consider, but this one, considering that the council had adopted most of these before, and that there really is a risk of harm to individuals if they're not, if these laws aren't enforced, I would highly recommend. You know, this is a little different than property crimes. These are, this is people's lives at stake. I would highly recommend adoption. Do you have any questions? Let me know.
Thank you, Rachel. Questions? Deputy Council President, and then Councilmember Hunt.
Just a quick one, because this seems pretty straightforward. Thank you very much for putting it to us that way. So really quickly, did you say that kind of the effect statement of the revised version is essentially if the RCW is changed in the future, it'll be automatically?
Correct.
Okay, thanks.
Counsel? Go ahead, Victoria. I'm having a tough night. Councilmember Hunt.
Absolutely. So my question is the one that I emailed, but I thought it'd be good to have it in our meeting. So this seems like an important, based on your presentation, this seems very important. And the law that prompted these changes was passed in 2021, and it already went into effect on July 1st of this year. And so I'm wondering why it was being, why it's being brought to council now as an emergency, given that we had, that this law was on the books since 20, or was going to be on the books since 2021? And then also, what could be done to avoid similar occurrences, being caught like this, and having to pass as an emergency ordinance in the future for anything similar?
That's a good question, and I can say that, you know, it should have been dealt with much sooner than this. This is, this is not how I would like to see things operate. I think that historically, there has not been quite as much communication between the administration and the court, which is honestly not atypical. There, the whole separate branches of government thing tends to silo those bodies pretty effectively. However, I think I'm kind of at an advantage coming in here, because I used to be a municipal prosecutor, and in fact have worked in Isqwa Municipal Court. I think that stuff's a little bit more on my radar, and, you know, that, and so, and I actually have been working really closely with the court, and I think that's sort of the feeling of the administration, is that this needs to be resolved, and that we'd like to see a closer working relationship with the court on all things, including, you know, issues like this. So I think that we shouldn't see that in the future, just because I think these issues will come to our attention a lot sooner, just by that collaboration. And I'll also just say that the extent that folks keep up on legislative updates and changes varies, and I think that often folks sort of ignore the criminal law changes a little bit to their detriment, or they focus more on some of the more, you know, they focus on really what they know, I think. And I think since a lot of people haven't done criminal law or worked in criminal, you know, that's kind of a different area, you just kind of expect that your prosecutor's going to deal with all of that. And of course, they don't know, they don't, prosecutors don't generally follow much as the legislative changes as much as the civil city attorneys do, for instance. So they get these issues when they come up as evidentiary challenges, which is how this came up for the prosecutors here. So then they did alert us. But I just really like following the legislative session, and there are a lot of really good summaries of basically every bill that affects municipalities, and I just, I can't speak to why it didn't get noted in 2021, because I wasn't here, but I can assure you that going forward, I actually read all the bills that affect the cities, and so, including the ones that affect, you know, criminal matters, because those are, I get it, and I find it interesting. So I hope that by doing those things, that this will not happen again.
Any additional questions? If not, is there a motion?
Thank you. I think there's a revised motion. Yeah, there is. Okay. I move to adopt ordinance number?
2984.
As revised, amending Chapter 9.30 of the Isqwa Municipal Code, persons, crimes relating to, to harmonize the chapter with recent changes to state law, providing for severability, declaring an emergency, and establishing an effective date.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any council discussion? Deputy Council President Hall?
Just to say that I'll be voting in favor of this motion tonight, and thank you very much for bringing it to the council's attention. Seems clear to me that we should be aligned with state RCW in this space, and also the potential risk of harm that you've outlined makes it clear that emergency action is appropriate. So I'll be voting in favor. Thanks.
Any additional comments? Councilmember Joe?
Thank you. I'll be voting in favor of this tonight. It's pretty important that we pass this, and all vote for it, because it's an emergency item, and all five of us have to vote in favor. It's just really important to people that have taken the time to go to court and get an order for protection, and they've put themselves out there. And then to have that order violated by someone either approaching their property, approaching their children, is traumatic. And if we don't have this in place, we don't have a way to enforce it in our courts, because there isn't a penalty for that behavior. So I know it's, seems a little trivial at times that we're just moving paper around, but this has real impacts on the lives of our citizens. So I'd hope that everyone would vote in favor. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Joe. Any other comments? Councilmember Hunt? Oh, sorry. Okay, great. It has been moved and seconded to adopt ordinance number 2984 as revised, amending Chapter 9.30 of the Isqwa Municipal Code, persons, crimes relating to, to harmonize the chapter with recent changes to state law, providing for severability, declaring an emergency, and establishing an effective date. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? That carries unanimously. That was a 5-0 vote.
Madam Mayor. Just as a point of personal privilege, I would just like us to take an oral vote, so that it is on the record for each person, and that we do have it verified that there were five in favor.
Sure. City Clerk?
All right, so the proposed motion was stated by the mayor, so I'll start with Deputy Council President Hall.
Aye.
Councilmember Ray?
Aye.
Councilmember Hunt?
Aye.
Councilmember De Michelle?
Aye.
Councilmember Joe?
Aye, thank you.
That's a vote of five ayes.
Thank you, City Clerk. The next item of business this evening is good of the order. There are some upcoming council meetings. The August 15th city council meeting is canceled to allow for a summer break, and the next regular city council meeting will be Tuesday, September 6th. August 8th, there is a committee of the whole meeting anticipated with agenda items that include the 2023-24 budget, the revenue forecast, and the mid-year update, Title 18 Land Use Code, the Future Updates List, which is also called the Whiteboard, the City Council Committee Connections with Boards and Commissions, and an executive session. So the next item, oh, sorry, there are some good of the order items as well. Councilmember Hall? Councilmember Hunt? Go ahead.
Okay, thank you. So I mentioned during my regional report that we have an upcoming Planning Development and Environment Committee meeting for this coming Thursday, and one of the items will be the Title 18 Future Updates List. So I wanted to ask my fellow council members if there were any additional questions that you thought our committee, and Councilmember Ray serves on this committee with me as well, that we might consider in that meeting. The two questions that are proposed by the administration are, firstly, are there any items council committee would like to add to that whiteboard list? And the second question is, does the list contain all the information for the council to sort the items for the purposes of determining which items to fund in the 2023-2024 budget? And so if council, if my fellow council members have any other questions that you think we should noodle through during our upcoming commission meeting, please do let me know, and we will consider those on Thursday.
Thank you for the prompt. Deputy Council President, and then Councilmember De Michelle.
Thanks, and if it's all right, I actually have several, so I might let.
Councilmember De Michelle.
There we go. Thank you. I wanted to bring to your attention, under the consent agenda, AB 8429 was regarding the Arts Commission grants. And I did want to note that in that ordinance, there was this statement, "The administration encourages the city council to revisit the policy of subsidizing non-Isqwa residents through arts commission grants and Parks and Community Services Department programs." I would really encourage us to do that, and I just wanted to state that I support that relooking at our policy. I know that we can be somewhat nuanced about that, that sports programs are different than handing out arts grants to different organizations that really are not part of the Isqwa community. And this is not a criticism of the Arts Commission, because they're following longstanding policy, but I think it is time for us to review that, because we have other government organizations now that could possibly take on that role, while we can focus on spending our tax dollars here with our citizens. So at any rate, I wanted to lend my support to that statement, and hope that we'll have that come back in front of us at a future agenda.
Thank you, Councilmember De Michelle, and I think your reference is particularly important when you think that the city of Sumamish likely did not exist at the time that policy was adopted, nor did the, I can't remember, the King County created a local, you know, a new local services department, and that also has happened since, you know, this was probably considered. So those are great points. Councilmember Hunt? Oh, we did you. Councilmember Hall?
Thank you very much, this is Councilmember Hall. Councilmember De Michelle, thank you for bringing that up. I've written that down, it's something that leadership will take down as an action item too, and work with the administration on that. And a quick question for Councilmember Hunt. Were you looking for feedback in terms of additional questions beyond those two, or what kind of feedback were you looking for?
Yes, so I was looking for additional questions that we should consider in the committee to provide useful information for when this goes back to the council, and also wanted to especially point this item out, because it was one of council's priorities for the, in the budget-related retreat, and also because there would be a quick turnaround for when it comes back to council, so I thought it was something where it would be good to make sure that our council committee discussion does touch on questions that are important to the council, if the council did have additional questions for us to consider.
And would it be appropriate for us to send you, the chair, a note if we do have a question in advance for the committee to consider?
Yes.
All right, thanks. Great. A couple things, then, I wanted to bring up just for council leadership. So National Night Out events are tomorrow night. There are four of them. We wanted to kind of quickly run through them tonight to see if there are any council members who are interested in joining those, so I can kind of get a sense of where we're going to be at. So there's one here at Veterans Memorial Field from 5:00 to 7:00. The Timberlake Lane Ice Cream, is it appropriate to list off these in a public meeting? Okay. There's an ice cream social at the Timberlake Lane, so it's pretty close to Timberlake Park if you want to go over there. That's from 7:00, 8:30. The Woods in Morgan's Ridge is having a picnic, and that's going to be at 6:00. And then I already know Councilmember Ray will be at the Talis event, which is 5:00 to 8:00 at Harvey Manning Park. Were there any other council members that were interested? I've got some calendar invites all ready to send out. So Councilmember Joe, I see you've turned on your mic.
I'd be happy to attend the event here between 5:00 and 7:00. Then I'll get in my car, and I'll go over to Timber Ridge and visit that location as well. I don't have kids at night, so I'm free.
All right, Joe? In Timber, I mean Talis, up at Harvey Manning Park?
No, the Timberline, the ice cream.
Oh, Timberlake, okay.
The ice cream is a big draw for me.
Yeah. Okay. Councilmember Hunt?
I am planning on going to the Talis event with my family.
Perfect. And you're busy tomorrow night, right, Councilmember De Michelle?
Yes, so I will also be volunteering, but I'll be at Discussing Clothing Bank, and also at Constance on the Green. So I would love to be there, but the organization that I'm very participating in, Influenced the Choice, will be at National Night Out, and we're very happy to be there.
Oh, great. Okay, great. All right, thank you very much. I'll connect with the council members who aren't here tomorrow too, and send out quick calendar invites, so they're kind of on your calendar. Tisha, I'll be sure to copy you on those, just so you know there aren't more than three of us at a particular event. So that's National Night Out. Biennial Budget Priorities List, I just want a quick reminder, that last Wednesday I sent out kind of our final biennial budget priorities list. We'll ask the administration to keep that included with any agenda packets that come forward for budget development, but might be worth printing out and keeping with you as we start to go through budget development or have it handy on your computer. So just wanted to highlight that with you all. Thanks to everyone who's been participating on welcoming back our boards and commissions to in-person meetings. We are kind of at a break right now, the next one isn't until the 10th that I'll be taking care of, and then beyond that, we don't have one until September. So I'll just bring one, bring this back up again in early September, because we do have some spots that are still available, including the Cemetery Board, Civil Service Commission, and the sister cities commission, question mark, one of those. I'll send out an update. Oh, that's my De Michelle.
If, I'll look at my schedule, but I'd like to put dibs on the Cemetery Board.
Okay.
Thank you.
Also, just my thanks to, on behalf of council leadership, for those of you who participated in, council members joining community events around town, I thought that was great. Please keep us in the loop as we're just continuing to connect with you on a weekly or biweekly basis, whether or not you think that's something you want to do more frequently during the year, and not just over the summer, if that's something that you'd like to create opportunities for council members to be out in the community more often, if that's something we can take up as an action. So just keep us in the loop on that. With regard to the next community listening session, it looks like September 15th might not work out after all, so we're going to be searching for a new date, and keep you in the loop on that, but we are proposing hosting that at the Talis, in the Talis community, so details are coming on that. I did want to bring up, though, based on some feedback, I just want to take a moment to talk about what we might be doing differently. So based on feedback that we got from the community at our first listening session up in the Isqwa Highlands, it sounds like there's a lot of value on the Q and A part of the meeting, and maybe less value on the other parts. So based on that, I'd like potentially for us to consider updating the structure, so the evening, the first half is focused on these kind of walk-up tables, and I'll explain that in a second, and the second half is focused on Q and A. So we have a full hour, I think it was two hours, the first one, is that right? A full hour on Q and A, which is what the community really values, and a full hour of us essentially combining the mingling and the presentation into a table-based service instead. So maybe there's a public safety table with the police chief, and council members can float to that table if they want. There's also a climate table, I was about to say Megan, with Stacy. There's a development table with Minnie, and that way council members can kind of float between those tables, and also float amongst people who are in the middle, and we do that kind of to lead up to the Q and A part. I wanted to just quickly bring that up to the council members who are here, and see if that's something you think might fit the needs of the community better, if you have any thoughts on that model, anything else? I see one thumbs up, a couple thumbs up.
Can we have a transportation table?
Transportation table?
Yeah, I think that would be a popular one, too.
It's just an idea that we're kind of floating now, right? So we'll work with the administration to figure out what's operational, like what we can actually do in that sense, but.
I like the idea.
Okay, great. And that's all I have. Thanks.
Thanks. Any more items for good of the order? Okay, if not, we will get to our last business item this evening, which is an executive session. So as earlier announced, there is an executive session this evening to discuss pending potential litigation per RCW 42.30, .110 per N1 per NI, and the item is expected to take 30 minutes. No action is anticipated in open session. So as a reminder, executive sessions are closed to the public, and we will now recess into executive session at 8:29 PM. For those participating virtually, anyone who's not part of the closed session will remain in the main meeting. You are welcome to stay in the meeting until it is reconvened. City Clerk?
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Could I make an announcement that I believe I have a conflict of interest for the executive session, as my employer has filed an amicus brief in the pending action.
So that means Councilmember Joe gets to go home. Okay.